Meeting for November sixteenth, twenty twenty.
I'm still. Are you here this evening?
Counselor is here.
Very good. Present, Counselor Gardner.
Present.
Counselor Tulowitsky?
Present.
Present virtually. Uh, Counselor Coldritis?
And then Melon, present. Thank you. At this time, I ask everyone to please rise for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, infinite, and just as for all. Bring us to forty-fifth Street Construction Update. Mr. Randall with us today.
Yes, this is Lee Randall with the OZ. Can you hear me?
Good evening.
Good evening. I'll start with Calumet Avenue. Uh, Calumet Construction is complete and open to traffic. Uh, we are obviously still constructing Forty-Fifth Street, so as a result of that, the left turn lanes. Forty-three remain closed as well as one lane eastbound. Left turn lane and then the right turn lane for eastbound. Uh, coming up, there may be some periodic lane disruption or some minor corrections uh that we refer to as punch list items along Calumet Avenue. Forty-fifth.
Both ways. Both.
You're cutting out on us.
All right. I got, I got.
Can you mute Julie's iPhone, please?
I'll start over if you can hear me. I don't know if you caught much, if any of that.
Oh, the first part about the uh, the lanes that are still being worked on.
Okay, so I'll just go ahead and start over, but Calumet Avenue Construction is complete and open to traffic. Uh, but due to the continued construction of Forty-Fifth, the southbound left turn lanes at Forty-Fifth will remain closed. Uh, there's also one lane closed on eastbound Forty-Fifth approaching Calumet. Uh, basically to restrict through traffic at that point. So there's a left turn lane and a right turn lane. Uh, there will be periodic or more than likely will be periodic closures along Calumet just to do some uh, quick corrections we refer to as punch list items such as some additional seating and perhaps some curb repair. Uh, on Forty-Fifth Street, construction is ongoing between Calumet and Southwood Drive. Uh, those operations include wall four construction, which is along the would be the north side of Forty-Fifth, if you will, the north or west side of Forty-Fifth, just east of the underpass. Uh, there is underground storm sewer installation taking place east of the underpass. Uh, bike path construction is ongoing. That is projected to be paved later this month. A lift station construction is ongoing. Hopefully that will be operational later this month. Uh, center curb construction between Calumet and the underpass is ongoing. Uh, concrete curving is mostly complete uh to the underpass. Uh, we are anticipating uh some additional curb work through the underpass uh later this week. Asphalt paving of Forty-Fifth Street uh between Calumet and the underpass is also expected later this week, this week, excuse me, as well as relief well installation uh that contractor mobilized today and is expected to complete later this week. So weather permitting with our current projection, we're hoping to complete asphalt paving uh of uh Forty-Fifth Street, excuse me, between the underpass and Southwood. Um, probably the first or second week of December. With that, of course, we continue acceleration operations. We have basically accelerated now for a total of thirty-four weeks. And our estimated costs are right at what we had projected initially of two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. So if there are any questions, I'll be happy to answer those at this time.
Counselors, do you have any questions for Mr. Randall?
If I could ask Mr. Randall a question, I know we're going to talk about the, the uh, the change order later on about additional acceleration that we have on the line now. Can I ask about the uh additional acceleration at this time? Okay. Lee, if you could explain a little bit about the, the need for that additional acceleration change order that we're considering later on. Uh, kind of give us some, give us some of the background and, and um reasons for that.
Yes, well, of course, we've, you know, been accelerating all year. Um, and due to that, we, we projected that we would or anticipate that we'd be at that, a limit that we set initially with that first change order. Um, but with our continued acceleration efforts, we are at that. Um, I think at the last meeting, uh, we had briefly talked about this, that there was uh more than likely um, we would exceed that amount. Um, so the change order that I've provided later on during this uh meeting to be addressed is for that estimated amount in order to get us to essentially the finish line uh to continue what we are doing currently and to complete paving of Forty-Fifth Street to Southwood.
When you say weather permitting, um, are there how good or how, what type of weather do we need between now and April or December for this to be completed?
Well, if they could stay like this, it'd be perfect. So essentially dry and certainly not frozen.
Any other questions?
Oh, uh, Lee, this is Steve. So when you say asphalt um is down the second, first or second week of December, i- is that what we would call substantial completion and residents and, and traffic would be then flowing uh all, all throughout Forty-Fifth?
Well, the hope is that we are able to get all base intermediate and surface down. Uh, certainly with surface, there will still be some lingering uh operations such as, you know, staining the retaining walls there on the east side of the underpass, similar to what is uh approaching the underpass there on the Centennial Village side. That has been completed. So those with the temperatures, that won't be done. Hopefully, we get most of the concrete flat work done as well. So there will be some lingering operations that will probably, you know, if not be able to address based on temperature this year, early next spring.
And, but um barring those items from a residence perspective, they'll be able to, they won't have to go around anymore. They'll be able to traverse Forty-Fifth Street. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. That's the intent. If we can get that paving completed, then we'd be able to open that certainly at least a one lane each direction, if not both.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I see no other questions for Mr. Randall. Uh, thank you, Lee.
Thank you.
This time brings us to the twenty-twenty Small Business Saturday Proclamation. The proclamation recognizing Small Business Saturday, whereas the Munster Town Council celebrates our local small businesses and contributions they make to our local community. According to the United States Small Business Administration, there are thirty-point-seven million small businesses in the United States. They represent ninety-nine-point-seven percent of all firms who feed employees in the United States and are responsible for sixty-four-point-nine percent of net new jobs created from two thousand to twenty-eighteen. And whereas small businesses employ forty-seven-point-three percent of employees in the private sector in the United States, sixty percent, sixty-two percent of US small businesses report that they need to see consumer spending return to pre-COVID levels by the end of twenty-twenty in order to stay in business. Sixty-five percent of US small business owners said it would be most helpful to their business to have their regulars return and start making purchases again. And three-quarters of US consumers or consumers are currently looking for ways to shop small and support their community. And whereas ninety-six percent of consumers who shop on Small Business Saturday agree that shopping at small independently owned businesses supports their commitment to making purchases that have a positive social, economic, and environmental impact. And ninety-seven percent of consumers who shop on Small Business Saturday agree that small businesses are essential to their community. And whereas ninety-five percent of consumers who shop on Small Business Saturday reported that they makes them want to shop or eat at small independently owned businesses all year long, all year long, not just during the holiday season. And whereas the town of Munster supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our communities. And whereas advocacy groups as well as public and private organizations across the country have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now, therefore, the Munster Town Council, due hereby, claimed November twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty as Small Business Saturday and urged the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. The Treasury, please offer the vote to adopt the proclamation.
Counselor Schoen?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitsky?
Yes.
Yes? Counselor Mellon?
Yes.
We have four to zero.
Thank you. That brings us to our public hearing on additional appropriations. This time we'll open, open up to the public for any questions regarding, just at this time, the additional appropriations for ordinance eighteen ten. Anyone wishing to ask a question? Dustin, did we receive any email questions regarding this hearing?
We did not.
All right. So assuming that we have one in the audience wishing to speak, I'll close the public hearing for ordinance eighteen ten. And this takes us to the public comments section. Is there anyone with us this evening who'd like to address the matter?
Mike, move it eighteen thirty-three to the plane. Just to follow up on two meetings ago, question about the water rate hike on Hammond and I know Dustin was going to put something together. I just, I don't know if anything become of it or it's still a work in progress.
It's still a work in progress, but we did, um, we do have representation tonight at the, at the hearing to um join other towns in monstrating against the, the full hike. Um, so we have, that reserves our rights and we hope to be able to negotiate to phase this in over time. But, but we've taken that initial step.
Okay.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak tonight? Hey, Dustin, did we receive any emails for tonight?
We did not.
Okay. Thank you. At this time, I will close the public comment portion of the meeting and move to our consent agenda.
I move that we accept consent agenda as presented.
I second it.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion or questions regarding the items on the consent agenda?
None for me.
Okay. Seeing none, uh, for Treasury, can you please call the vote?
Counselor Schoen?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitsky?
Yes.
Votes yes. Counselor President Mellon?
Yes.
We have four to zero.
Thank you. That brings us to old business. We have uh one item. It's ordinance eighteen ten, the additional appropriations. This is the second reading and is um, the item for which we just held the public hearing.
I move that we accept ordinance eighteen ten for the additional appropriations of funds for the year twenty-twenty on second reading.
I second it.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any questions or discussions regarding ordinance eighteen ten?
Can I just bring to your attention that the CARES grant is new on the second reading? It was not on the first reading. And that is because uh we went to uh training and the state board of accounts recommended that we set up a fund and appropriately appropriate the funds. So that's that addition.
And that is the CARES money that comes, is reimbursement for uh expenses due to COVID.
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Westland, does that allow us to still pass this on in the second reading with that? Is that considered a um material change that we would have to go back to our first reading?
No, I, I think it's fine.
Okay.
I mean, it is obviously in terms of a model. Why? You know, it's one percent increase, but I think it's fine.
Okay, because it's an, and as you described, it was an in and out. It's just to show the accounting tool so that they can track how we spent the CARES Act money, correct?
Exactly.
All right. Okay, um, any other questions? Seeing none, for Treasury, can you please call?
Counselor Schoen?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitsky?
Yes.
Votes yes. Uh, Dr. Coldritis is still out. Uh, President Mellon?
Yes.
Very good, four zero.
Thank you. Takes us to new business. We have the Forty-Fifth Street and Calumet Avenue Change Order Number twelve, number twelve, which is request for structural concrete requirements. Project B three-six-two-two-nine.
This is the first of three proposed change order requests this evening. Uh, this request is for four thousand six hundred and fifty-four dollars. This change uh is required to change the curing method for the structure. The engineer of record originally designed this to cure by one method. Uh, that method would have taken more time under the circumstances with acceleration. We made a modification uh that was approved by the uh engineer of record. And this is the result.
I would move that we approve a change order number twelve for N dot contract B and employee thirty-six two-nine for a total of four thousand six hundred and fifty-four dollars and sixty-three cents.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any questions or comments regarding this that we just ran on the line? Seeing none. For Treasury, can you please call the vote?
Counselor Schoen?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitsky?
Yes.
Votes yes. President Mellon?
Yes.
We have four to zero against the change order.
Thank you. That brings us down to Forty-Fifth Street and Calumet Avenue, change order number fifteen, which requires for temporary asphalt sidewalk between Forty-Fifth Street and the proposed bike path. I recall this is where um we had had many residents asking for us to uh leave that so they can traverse safely. Is this, this is it?
This is it.
Okay.
I move to approve change order number zero-one-five for N dot contract B three-six-two-two-nine.
No, second.
Okay. We have a motion and we have a second. Are there any questions or comments?
We have to see positive input appreciation for bike path there, so.
Then all the work for this meeting is done.
Yes.
It was done.
It was done, so we're just paying for it.
Yes, that's correct.
That is correct.
Yeah, just as.
If we don't authorize payment for it, it's done anyway.
Well, that is correct. We did.
You'll get sued.
But we did discuss this and approve it, correct, at, at our previous council meeting. Am I, am I fuzzy on that, Dustin?
You are not fuzzy on that, President Mellon.
Okay.
You're not fuzzy.
Well, I'm not. I'm, I'm still foggy. So, okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Uh, just to comment that this is a, a reminder or just a reminder that um part of the reason for doing this is that stretch that is used and um consequential to our bike path could have been undone, unfinished for a period of a year or two years or longer. So, uh, appreciate the the motion to have completed this. And like Wendy said, we've gotten some positive feedback from bikers already.
I've seen people use, I see people using it every day, so I agree and it's a good, a good fix. Can you please call for the vote?
Counselor Schoen?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitsky?
Yes.
Votes yes and President Mellon?
Yes.
Four zero.
Thank you. We'll move to another Forty-Fifth Street and Calumet Avenue, change order number seventeen, which is supplemental acceleration cost.
So as Lee alluded to earlier in the update, uh, we are still working and still working diligently. If the weather holds, stays above freezing and dry, we're going to continue to work. And we've also reached the end of our previously authorized acceleration rope. So what we're looking for is continue, uh, can you, continued permission to continue to work. Uh, we've got a puncher's chance to get this done this year, uh, and I'd love to try to drag it over the finish line.
And, and the reality of this acceleration, this is probably more Saturday and Sunday type work rather than late night type work?
That's correct. Mostly Saturdays. It's hard to get deliveries on Sundays, but it, it will allow us to work six days a week, weather permitting.
Okay. And, and I guess if weather doesn't permit, then the total cost of the acceleration goes down, right? If weather's not.
That's right.
Okay.
Uh, what you're authorizing here is uh permission to pay. We don't get charged anything that doesn't get done and is not uh related to acceleration of the contract. So they could, there's a, as Mr. Randall alluded to, there's lots of things that can be done out there, but if it doesn't advance the uh substantial completion deadline, it's not qualified under the acceleration costs. So this is permission to accelerate those items that uh effectuate a positive outcome for the deadline.
Well, I will make a motion to approve change order number seventeen for N dot contract B thirty-six-two-two-nine for a total not exceed fifty thousand dollars. Is that correct?
I'd like to hear it.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any further questions?
Um, I guess I'm just, I, I, I feel like we're on track and this was part of the original plan, but I'm curious if, if anything has gone not as planned during the original two hundred and seventy-five thousand of acceleration.
Lee, uh, I, I know you're still on the line. Thank you for sticking around for a detailed question like that. Uh, would you like to wade into this one?
Well, we've certainly had some hiccups. Um, but considering um how far we've come this year so far with acceleration, um, what we've done, working extended hours uh throughout the year, seven days a week uh for many months in order to construct that underpass. Uh, yeah, I mean, this is, is basically just premium time uh that we are paying for, for the contractor, essentially the overtime difference for the contractor to perform, perform this work and get this project completed this year.
Thank you, Lee. And I, I, I recognize the weather has been quite favorable lately, which I imagine has allowed us to do more of this sort of acceleration uh activity. And so just appreciate the hard work from the team and looking forward to hopefully the second week of December.
Absolutely. Yeah, we've been very fortunate with our weather this year. So, I mean, at least this fall. So at least we've gotten a break in some respect.
Just knocked on wood as well.
Well, that's right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Seeing none, can you please call the vote?
Counselor Schoen?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitsky?
Yes.
Votes yes and President Mellon?
Yes.
Four zero.
Thank you. Brings us to ordinance eighteen eleven, which is creation of fund, one for the great cares, IFA grant. And Wendy, this is what you were speaking of.
Exactly. This was the federal government through the um COVID virus aid relief and economic stimulus cares. Um, they allotted certain money to each of the state. The state then said, the states, the communist towns can have a certain portion. The town of Munster was allocated seven hundred and thirty-one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. In a recent uh state board of accounts, it's not required, but it's considered a best practice on good internal controls to create this fund, show if the money coming in and out, so.
Uh, I would move to hear ordinance eighteen eleven on first reading and schedule a second reading for the next regular meeting.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions at this time? Uh, for the first reading?
Well, I sup, oh, I, I support the creation of the account, of course, and um I, I think if I recall from a previous meeting, this money's already been, uh, it sounds like we've already been able to account for um collecting all and having spent the money. It, and, and it's been used mostly for personnel costs that was allowed. Do I have that right?
Personnel, the money we received went into the most, all those tiny, tiny portion of it went into the um general fund. And yes, to cover things like personnel costs. And the small portion, it was maybe ten thousand or less, went into the technology fund to upgrade some things that we needed COVID-related, of course.
Okay, so this is, this is in effect seven hundred and thirty-one thousand plus dollars coming to us.
Exactly. We got every penny that we were entitled to.
Okay. Wonderful. Thank you.
That's what we say, wonderful, very good.
And I say good work uh to um Mr. Trisha Abbott and, and Wendy and your team. Uh, because I'm sure there are some communities that for one reason or another are leaving some of their money on this table and we were able to take every penny that they were willing to give to us, so. Thank you. Wendy, can you please call the vote?
Counselor Schoen?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitsky?
Yes.
Votes yes and uh President Mellon?
Yes.
Four zero. We'll move on to the second reading.
All right. Now we have um Barnes and Thornburg engagement letter. Hang on. Oh wait. No, I missed one. I skipped one. I apologize. Uh, this is ordinance eighteen twelve, the procedures and standards for small cell IG networks and facilities. We will, as Mr. Randall would tell us about, we will all cringe and remember this awful state.
Yes, thank you.
That intro.
Yeah, as, as many of you are aware, telecommunications companies are racing to build a big G network or cell phones. Um, part of this involves what they call small cell antenna, also called micro wireless. There are different names for it, but essentially what it is, is it's smaller antennas that go between the large antennas that you see on like towers and uh our water tower, for example. And um so they, the state of Indiana, these companies were able to work with the state of Indiana to pass some legislation that um places some restrictions on how the town can regulate uh this infrastructure. One of the things that they have included in their uh, in this legislation is that um as a right, we kind of need to allow for these facilities to be installed in the public right of way. Indiana code eight dash one dash thirty-two-point-three spells out all of the sort of constraints that we have as a municipality in our regulation of this uh, of this, these installations. And uh we essentially have to pass an ordinance that complies with that state code in order to do anything, only in terms of uh controlling, regulating some of these, uh, some of these things. So what we've done is we've prepared an ordinance uh for your consideration that uh we think incorporates everything that we need to include from the state statute and gives us a little bit of uh authority to kind of steer where these, where these things are installed. Um, and um we also have some ability to regulate the aesthetics, so we've factored that into it as well. So those are, that's a summation of the ordinance. Uh, I can get into more detail if you'd like, but um I'll say that Dave Westland and I have looked at this ordinance and I, I know he has some questions regarding uh the ownership of the, these poles when they're installed or the ownership of light poles if uh they include this equipment. So he is, uh, he's recommended that we do a first reading tonight with a kind of postponed or second reading for two, maybe since second meeting in December to allow and to take a more thorough review and uh refine the ordinance before it gets passed.
Or hold. And this needed to be, the state is asking that we do this by, by the beginning of twenty-twenty-one. Is that what, or are we under?
So the, the way that it works is uh there's a provision in the ordinance that says you either had to pass this um within, by a certain date, which was in twenty-seventeen, following the passage of the state legislation or um three months after. or, um, three months after you've been contacted by telecommunications company, um, that, that is seeking to install this infrastructure. So I will say that the town has been contacted by a telecommunications company. Um, I know Dustin has been working specifically with AT&T and, um, they're aware that we're working on this ordinance. So they're kind of waiting uh, to really move forward in a formal way until we pass this.
Did you have something you wanted to add?
No.
Oh, okay. You were going towards my point.
Well, yeah, I got all kinds of things to add about. But it, this, the statute kind of hamstrings you and what and Tom's right, one of the big debates we talked about was if the telecommunications company comes in, do we want them, and they want to either A, replace, if they want to replace one of our light poles, put their stuff like in the pole?
Uh huh.
That's more aesthetically pleasing. However, um, who then owns that pole? And so we were kind of debating the liability, the maintenance, you know, all those other factors that go into, should we own the pole? Should we insist that we own the light pole or should we insist that since they're replacing the light pole, that they now own the light pole? And I don't know that we really came to a real good resolution, other than to throw our hands up and suggest that, you know, we don't care for the statute, which, you know, is obvious, but, um, so that's why we're asking that you, you set it for a second reading in two meetings, which will be the second meeting in December, we'll have a the best suggestion we can now in terms of that.
Yes, the language in the, in this ordinance that's in front of you tonight does have some, I guess it has some language about responsibility. So for example, if if the pole that, that has an antenna on it, it's knocked down, whose responsibility is it to push, you know, pick it back up and that sort of thing. And it, it does, even as it is here, it does protect us, I think. But again, we just want to kind of clarify ultimately who the owner and some of those things.
And Tom, may I ask a question now or should we wait till we have a motion?
Uh, let's wait till we have the motion.
Okay.
I will make a motion, uh, to, uh, hear ordinance eighteen twelve on first reading, ordinance ending chapter fifty, article five of Munster municipal court establishing procedure, the standards for small cell slash 5G network and facilities and set second reading for the second meeting in December.
I second that.
The motion is second and now we're open for questions.
Yep. My question, Tom, is just from, what I'm curious about is from the resident perspective, what will we notice? These, the small cell or micro wireless antenna will be installed on, on streetlights, I understand. So, you know, from a resident perspective, are, what are you going to notice to, when, when this work is done?
Uh, I think what you will notice is, um, yes, kind of like small mechanical equipment being installed on light poles. Um, we're, we've got some language in this version of the ordinance that, as I said, kind of regulates the aesthetics. So we're making it, uh, we're going to be requiring it to be as, you know, it's, um, unobtrusive as possible. But you will see, uh, some like small boxes and antenna looking things projecting off of light poles.
And I would say, I, I, I don't know if I have all the details exact, but back in twenty seventeen, they initially gave us, gave towns, the opportunities, the opportunity, was it Dustin, was it like ten days to declare what areas you would not allow these? So you could like carve out areas and, um, like we and Carmel and Fisher possibly a few rushed to do that. And then they decided they didn't really like that. They, I think they thought maybe, um, that the towns wouldn't actually get to it in time, but we did. So they scrapped that. So it's.
So that's, that's a, that's a fair recollection of what happened.
Yeah, you'll remember we, we limited our underground only utility area to residential. And there were other towns that went out and tried to, say, well, the whole town is an underground utility area. So you can't have them anywhere. The state legislature didn't care about that. So I think we were smart in limiting it to the residential. I know and Dustin May was the one who pointed this out before, they already have these in Indianapolis, uh, on some of the light poles. And so after he pointed out, I went down there and like, made a concerted effort to like, look, and I didn't, what, it's on the traffic signals there, isn't it Dustin?
It's on the traffic signals and on the, uh, streetlights.
Yeah. To answer Steve's question, hopefully very little is what you're going to notice.
The, the keen observer might find it kind of neat, but it's not going to be, um, it's not going to be life changing by the sounds of it.
Well, ideally we get this passed and everybody plays nice. It will be, uh, on the neat side, both as a novel source of technological improvement and as a cleanly installation of new infrastructure on our asset. Uh, if we don't do this, there will be other communities that don't. Uh, you'll just see something slapped up there real quick and real dirty. And that would be noticeable. And that would not be a story that you'd want to tell your residents.
So appreciate the effort on this, uh, on this ordinance and, and also to you, Mr. Westland for taking extra time to, uh, review it.
These, these network and these towers, um, they're put up there. There's, is there revenue involved with this? Are we renting that space to those, for licensing that, that area?
So I can answer that. Uh, on our water towers, there are, uh, license agreements, rents being paid. Uh, one of the big boons for the telecommunications industry with this small cell legislation was that, uh, they don't have to pay us rent beyond like a nominal charge. I think it's fifty dollars a year to put their asset on our existing infrastructure. So this was a big, big win for, uh, multinational corporations. Cause they got, you know, free, basically free use of existing, uh, infrastructure and power. Uh, so.
Good. And you got to remember where this started. It was, if you don't want to, if you don't make them go on a light pole, an existing pole, they put up a tower in a right of way, right? Like, which would be awful because you'd have another structure as opposed to what should be a limited noticeably with this box-like thing at the top of a light pole.
Okay. Uh, I understand it's kind of proof of the award rule, um, agreement or reigning over the years for all this.
And better salesmen is what they were talking.
Okay, we'll see. Doing the best we can with what we've been dealt, basically. So.
I have no other questions.
Great. Um, thank you, Tom. Can you please help the vote?
Yes, Counselor Schoen?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki?
Yes.
Both yes and President Mellon?
Yes.
Four zero.
Thank you. And that brings us to the Barnes and Thornburg engagement letter. I don't know.
So this is our annual engagement letter, uh, for legislative and executive, uh, branch lobbying services at the state of Indiana. Barnes and Thornburg again present us with the same fees they have, uh, presented us with in years past. We get a great amount of value, uh, for this, uh, for our residents. And it would be my suggestion and recommendation that you, uh, allow me to engage with Barnes and Thornburg again for the legislating lobbying services.
I move to authorize the town manager to sign the lo- letter of engagement with Barnes and Thornburg for legislative lobbying services.
I will second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions?
I, I guess, uh, Dustin, the only thing I would ask, you said great amount of value. Is there some examples that you can give? Um, that just kind of highlight the value and, and have a voice out in Indianapolis?
Sure. Uh, for the executive session, uh, executive branch lobbying, we've had, uh, a, a great relationship with Barnes and Thornburg on a number of issues. Uh, probably first and foremost is the great separation itself. Uh, when uh, this project, when, when I picked this up, there was, uh, it was, it was in a bad place and it was through the efforts of, uh, Barnes and Thornburg, uh, being longest enough in the council at the time that we repaired that relationship, but all, all, all three of those part, parties had to pull their weight. I mean, it was a three-legged stool. And that was, could not have been done without Barnes and Thornburg's intervention, uh, and advocacy, uh, with both the governor's office and, uh, the Indiana, Indiana Department of Transportation. Uh, other elements, uh, ha- it's kind of hard to prove a negative, but there's been a lot of defense played, uh, in the general assembly on a lot of land use items that would have adversely affected, uh, many communities, uh, in the state of Indiana, uh, particularly Munster, uh, such as local, uh, preemption of certain kinds of sign ordinances and, uh, land use codes. So while it's, I, I can say that there's a huge benefit to the residents of the town of Munster. It's, it's hard to prove that negative, uh, but, but that is a concrete example. Another is when, uh, legislation is being written, it's, it's not uncommon to say a municipality of X population, uh, can do this, this or this, while everybody else is kind of like, you know, you, you get to kick rocks. Well, uh, having Barnes and Thornburg there, you'll find many pieces of legislation, uh, saying that, you know, a municipality with a population of twenty-three thousand or more, uh, and we happen to be twenty-three thousand. So there are things that we can avail ourselves of, uh, that other communities, uh, could not have had, had we not had that, uh, voice in the room.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I've said a point of curiosity, why the two different rates? It seems like five months of the year, it's five thousand and the other seven months is three thousand retaining.
Uh, there's more work to do during the, the, when the sessions, the assemblies in, 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 in court, in, in session.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Wendy, can you please help with the vote?
Counselor Schoen?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki?
Yes.
Both yes and President Mellon?
Yes.
Four zero.
Thank you. Brings us to item G, the Northeast Alley Improvement.
Council meeting. I'm zooming in. Uh, so this is a change order, uh, of eighteen thousand, three hundred and forty-seven dollars. It is the cost of, uh, commodities. So in that northeast alley project, you'll recall that there was a rather dramatic, grade cut to make sure that the water flowed, uh, and, uh, appropriately, but with that dramatic cut, uh, there was a lot of driveways that, uh, had, had a, you know, an untenable, uh, bump between their, the end of their drive and the, the alley. And that's not the way to be a good neighbor. So what we did was we went back and, uh, poured concrete, uh, and sometimes asphalt, depending on the circumstances, to meet that drive with the grade of the alley, uh, rather than just kind of say tough luck, right? That, that's not what we want to do for our residents. So there was this change order reflects that, uh, action to take care of our residents driveway as it relates to the final grade of the alley and the final grade of the end of their drive apron. So what I would hope for is a motion and roll call vote to authorize this change order.
I move to authorize the change order to site services in the amount of eighteen thousand, three hundred and forty-seven dollars and three cents.
I will second that motion.
With a motion and a second. Are there any questions?
Dustin, do you remember roughly what the, uh, overall budget was? I'm just curious what percent this eighteen thousand is?
I don't recall, uh, Councilman Tulowitzki. I think it's less than seven percent. I could give you a concrete answer, uh, at, at the next meeting.
It looks like, uh, the original contract price was a hundred and fifty-nine thousand. So this would be eight hundred thousand. So that's just.
I'm just curious to calculate, you know, for residents, the, um, the, you know, the percent above the minimum that we, that, that we've are deciding with this order to, to, to help make things right for them.
So it's a, but let's call it twelve percent. It's eleven and a half.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Can you please help for the vote?
Counselor Schoen?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki?
Yes.
Both yes and President Mellon?
Yes.
Four zero.
Thank you. It moves us to the, let's see, what are the, Northeast Alley Improvement application, application of payment number three, item H.
Yes. So this item, uh, is the release of retainage. So you, you've seen this, uh, a few times for a few other projects, but this, uh, contemplates the, uh, change order that you just authorized. And this would be the release of the retainage. And now we can say congratulations, site services, you did the job that we expected you to do. And here's your final payment.
I would make a motion that we, uh, release the final payment for the change of seventeen thousand, seven ninety-six point sixty cents uh, to site services for the completion of the Northeast Alley Improvement project.
I second it.
With a motion and a second. Any questions?
The only thing I would ask is the landscaping portion of, this was not part of site services, the, the additional cut and seeding that was on this, that was not a site service project. That was separately bid out. Is that correct?
That's correct. That was C and T landscaping.
And, and is that project completed now also?
Uh, it should be winding down. Uh, I, I think if they're not complete, they will be shortly.
Okay. I'm sorry, we're doing two different projects on the one. Sorry. I can't, I stopped talking.
Wendy, can you please help the vote?
Counselor Schoen?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki?
Yes.
Both yes and President Mellon?
Yes.
Four zero.
Thank you. Move to item I, the streetscape, uh, in Adbrook, the alternative, alternate proposal. Sorry.
Yeah. So this is a proposed, uh, new piece of work that would expand Tesca and Sam Schwartz's scope that they're currently working on it right now for our streetscape. So had an interesting conversation with, uh, a council member, uh, who can jump in if they, if they want, but they asked me with the, uh, likely, uh, construction of the train, uh, and the streetscape, what will happen with that, uh, intersection between, you know, say Manor and Harrison, uh, is traffic going to be bad? Uh, and I, I, will that be answered by the streetscape? I said, well, that's a really, really good question, but it's not the question that we proposed to Tesca and Sam Schwartz for them to answer, uh, but it is a phenomenal question, uh, and they could probably answer it for us. Uh, so I had a couple other follow-up conversations, uh, with, with folks and indeed they, they, they can do that. Uh, and this study area that is being proposed is basically from Holman to Jackson, uh, west and east uh, and Bronmore and Briar, north and south. So that, that little box, what, uh, what could the, the, the street connections look like to best serve uh, the residents, both in automobiles, bicycles and on foot to get to where they need to go most safely and effectively. So, uh, given that that's going to be an area of, uh, both redevelopment and construction in the future. So all good stuff, uh, but it's good stuff if you have a plan for how to accommodate it. Probably not so great if you just kind of let it happen to you. So what we're asking is permission to kind of anticipate some different variables that may, uh, happen in the town and have a plan to address those when it comes, rather than be a half beat off, will be right on, right in time. So that, that's what we're proposing. Uh, it, it would be, uh, a seventeen thousand, eight hundred dollar, uh, piece of work. It would include, uh, further public engagement, uh, and a couple more meetings with staff and elected officials. And the deliverable would be both a narrative and some, uh, so, some visual elevations, so some basic. And the deliverable would be both a narrative and some, some visual elevations, some basic conceptual drawings. Nothing that's going to be engineered for construction, but some strategies for us to wrap our minds around. There's available funding in our local option income, economic development fund for this. So I would ask that you consider it at least. Like, cause I think it's a, it's a good question and it's a question that can be answered.
I would like to make a motion and roll call and via roll call vote to authorize the town manager's entrance to this agreement. Tesca Associates develop a streamlined concept for a price not to exceed 17,800. I will second that.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any questions?
I would, I would like to, again, I think this is again above and beyond what the streetscape plan was set to do. But I do like the proactive nature of trying to take the study area and really address the transportation development district that's going to be talked about so much for the next two to three years and you know, construct it over that time or within the next five years. So I really do like the proactive nature of this. And I do think the more that we can get a jump on thing to be proactive with this rather than reactive, I think that is much better.
That's very good. And by the way, the streetscape committee will be meeting by the state of 2:30. Open to the public, Tom?
Your question, it's not really a public meeting.
Open the council, but.
Yeah, I mean.
What I, I would. I would.
Two, I'll, I'll be there so one other.
Yes. And I I will echo Chuck. This is, this kind of goes along with what we've tried to do along with the, with knowing that the South Shore extension was likely to happen. So it goes along with our kind of ahead of the curve. And if we were to, I would assume if we were to look at this separately outside of Tesca, say in another year or so, we'd say, oh, we need to look at this project. It would likely be a larger, a larger price tag for them, just because we would be engaging with a completely new entity. Dustin's nodding his head, yes, because we've seen us proposals go because there's a lot that goes into getting to know the area, getting to know what, you know, how everything looks and Tesca is doing that already. So I think it's money well spent and that way we'll have some options and when the activity begins, we'll have something we can pull off the shelf and say, this is what we'd like to look like. And then we'll have the TDD money that we can likely spend on it. So this is all, I think this is all very, very good. So we have a motion and a second. And Steve, did you have anything?
Yeah. I, I think it's a great idea. You know, this covers a good portion of what I think of as historic Munster. So, you know, getting some professionals to look at how to improve the infrastructure, especially the flow of traffic and bicycles and foot traffic and everything around that train station is, is a great idea. My question is, it says, you know, the Boundary Streets, Holman, Jackson, Broadmore and Briar, is that including those streets Dustin? Or yeah, I suppose it would be, but.
It says between.
Right. Is it between, up to and including or?
That's a really interesting question, Councilman Tulowitsky. Do you mean like the outside edge or?
But I don't know. I happen to grow up in the, in the 200 block of Briar Lane. So since Briar Lane was, I just imagined, you know, living there. And you know, if I, I'm just like, what to imagine as we have done streetscaping and recommended improvements when you go from Briar to Sunset? Is it like just the south side of Briar that gets the changes or is it?
I would say it's the entirety of the street. We're not gonna, we're not gonna abandon one half of the street.
Okay. Okay. I know it's an interesting question, but help me anyways, visualize what, what we might be talking about here.
Any others? Okay. Wendy, can you please call for the vote? Councillor Schoen?
Yes.
Councillor Gardner?
Yes.
Councillor Tulowitsky?
Yes.
Votes yes and we, or President Mellon, yes. Yes. All right. Thank you. That brings us to item J, the TD Steering Committee Appointment. This is Alway is, hers is expiring on December 31st, 2020, correct?
Yes.
And she will, she is not seeking reappointment. This do, so we have, this is just on here because it's been, it's been sent to us, Dustin. But we don't have to take action tonight.
Not before the end of the year.
Yeah. Okay. And I will, I will say that and you can, I believe that every other community, Miss Wood has done a great job. She even led up a committee. She leadership role with the committee for, was it for two years, Dustin?
Yes. She chaired for two years.
chaired for two years and she did a great job. On the, all of the other participating communities had someone from, it was either an elected official or a, an employee of the town representing. So we might want to consider that as we move forward. It's, she did a great job, like I said, but if she's not seeking reappointment, that's the makeup that, that we noticed when we, we attended the meeting. So I'll just put that out there and.
And my only question is we have reached out to her and she has decided not to pursue this for the next year?
She did. I reached out to her. I received an email from her a week ago, Monday.
Okay, that's all. I would motion that we just table this appointment till later on to one meetings in summer.
Second.
The second, Steve?
Yeah, second, sorry.
Do you have any questions?
No, I was just gonna say I didn't think that a motion was necessary. No, no problem.
If we vote, is it?
Well, now you gotta vote.
Now we have. Yeah.
It's not necessary, but it would make it, nothing wrong with making the motion.
We'll make it, John, that we are going to move it to a meeting in December, one of the two. Wendy, can you please call for the vote? Councillor Schoen?
Yes.
Councillor Gardner?
Yes.
Councillor Tulowitsky?
Yes.
Votes yes and President Mellon, yes, four, zero. Okay. This brings us to our final item, K, the Police Squad Car Bid Award. Chief Shackle with us this evening.
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, we put out permission and council bids for six new squad cars. We had two responsive and responsible bidders, Ozek Ford in Burns Harbor and Terry's Ford in Piaton, Illinois. The most, the lowest bid came down to Terry's Ford in Piaton, Illinois for a grand total of $185,000, 185,087 which made them the low bidder, requested the council award bid and Terry's Ford to Piaton, Illinois. And also know the equipment for the new squads will also be purchased through the same lease purchase program, which we've done in the past.
I will make a motion that we accept the bid from Terry's Ford for the cost of the vehicles minus the trade-in for total cost of the 185,087.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions for Chief Shackle? Seeing none, the treasurer, please call for the vote. Councillor Schoen?
Yes.
Councillor Gardner?
Yes.
Councillor Tulowitsky?
Yes.
Votes yes, President Mellon, yes, four, zero. Thank you. That brings us to our report section. Does anyone have anything to report at this time?
The only thing I would like to say is recently Munster has been ranked as one of the top 20 safest cities in Indiana. This was ranked by safewise.com and we were ranked 12th in the state. I'd like to give congratulations to our police department and all of the people that support the police department, residents and businesses and the community service organizations.
Great, thank you.
Very much.
Thank you.
And you have anything to report tonight?
Our board meets tomorrow.
Our board tomorrow noon or five?
Tomorrow is.
Wait, tomorrow's five, okay. Steve, do you have any reports for us?
I'm just at the, well, the Lake County Solid Waste Management District Board is meeting this week, first time in a couple of months. And then from the school board, there was a special meeting last week, I believe, to hear and, and discuss transportation, the no transportation zone, particularly around Elliott School. The, sort of the data shows that Elliott School has something like 18% of, of, of residents, parents are able to take the bus and that compares to something like 46% in the other schools, the other elementary schools and higher from Wilberide and, and Munster High School. Part of the discussion also included that there's a whole part of Elliott parents on the north side of Ridge where there are not a lot of sidewalks. There aren't sidewalks for all the kids to be walking to school. So they basically heard the, read an email that had come in and discussed options and some of the background for that. So I expect that will be something, someplace where the council and the school board may coordinate going forward. But that is the main update I have from the school board.
Has there been any conversation about meeting with the school board, a joint meeting between council and school board?
I've been in contact with the school board. We said after the election, we would confirm that, but I did float the idea we had of as using some of the quote unquote fifth Fridays. So months where there is, sorry, fifth Mondays, months where there is a fifth. Yeah, Monday in the month where neither we nor they would have regularly planned meetings. So no, nothing concrete yet, but probably in the next month, we'll have an idea of, of when we'll sit down together.
Thank you. I have nothing to report at this time. I've been out of commission for a couple of weeks, so I have nothing and. All right. That brings us to our next meeting will be December 7th at 7:00 PM. Followed by seven, I'm sorry, seven, and then followed by December 21st will be our final meeting of 2020, also at 7:00 PM. Bring us, bring us to adjournment.
Make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
One second.
Motion, a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it, we are done. Thank you. Thank you for joining us this evening. For November 16th, 2020. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, that's okay. I forgot. Commissioner Schoen?
Present.
Present. Commissioner Gardner?
Present.
Present. Commissioner Tulowitsky?
Present.
Present and Commissioner Mellon? Present. Four, zero in attendance. Hey, I actually don't have an agenda in front. So I know that we will, we have an open to the public session. Is there anyone wishing to speak regarding redevelopment business? Seeing none?
I will make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. The treasurer, please call for the vote. Commissioner Schoen?
Yes.
Commissioner Gardner?
Yes.
Commissioner Tulowitsky?
Yes.
Votes yes and Commissioner Mellon? Yes. Four, zero for the consent agenda. All right, we have nothing under old business. In our new business, we have the redevelopment taxing units annual meeting. It's, it's something that we were asked to do. It's, it's provided, it's something that was put into Indiana code in 2018. This is our, this is an annual meeting where a notice was sent to all taxing units as listed in the memo. And it's just a snapshot of of percentages of budget and, sorry. And our year-to-date budget, what we're spending for tip funds. And then it shows percentages, what our plan, page three is our plan of spending. And we, at the conclusion of this meeting, this will be emailed to the taxing units explaining that we presented it at an open. We don't have anybody attending this evening. From Mr. Hawkins? Oh, this, sorry, I see.
But the president of the Senate.
I've been hearing my.
The president of the Senate.
Yes. Maybe you were copying. I'm sorry. I didn't see that first. Thank you, Mike. So this is, this is just an item for the agenda. There's no action to be taken. It's just, here's information for redevelopment wishes. Mr. Gardner has a question.
And I would just like to thank the treasurer for presenting this information and then forwarding to various taxing bodies that are listed in the memo.
Thank you.
Thank you for doing that.
Thank you. Appreciate that. All right. And I believe I, I lost. But that brings us to, I believe we.
Reports, there's no reports.
No reports.
And announcements and then adjournments.
And the announcement would be that the redevelopment commission regular meetings will follow the regular council meetings, both on December 17th or 7th and December 21st. And that is it. It brings us to adjournment.
So.
Very nice. Thank everybody for coming. We're, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, all right. This meeting is adjourned at 8:10. Thank you for coming today. All right.